...need, and so we have with us tonight Ben Crothimer with Enterprise who is going to go through that presentation. You'll have the opportunity to ask any questions that you'd like. Also want to recognize in the room that we have Chief Deputy Carlos Williams and Captain Kevin West from Sheriff's Office here tonight, and if you have any questions specific to their fleet needs, they'll be happy to answer those questions. So if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite Mr. Crothimer up and walk through the presentation.
Sure.
Thank you all for having me out tonight. Appreciate it. Appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you all. Like I said, feel free, keep it very interactive if there's any questions. Right now in the state of North Carolina, we've partnered with over 50 government entities, and that number is continuously growing. Fully vetted through Sourcewell, so most of the new partnerships that do start are just simple as piggybacking off that process, making it very easy, so that due diligence has been done. So with that, I'll jump into the presentation. So again, this is our cycle of services for fleet management. We're a sister company to Enterprise Rental, as you know. Still a privately held company based out of St. Louis, but we have the autonomy to operate very locally here in North Carolina. Our local headquarters where the county we manage out of is right in the Raleigh office, and we have a location in Charlotte. So depending on where in the state you are, that's how it's managed. You get that true local account management. What you see here is our cycle of services, but we always want to point out, it's not all or nothing. That's an a la carte approach. There's no cookie cutter approach. We want to customize it for the entity we're partnering with. But we do recognize that that partnership always begins with acquisition.
Just sorry, if you don't mind, if you'll speak in the microphone, we do have this on video, so those watching us remotely can hear you and the board here can hear you.
Okay, that's perfect. So ultimately, it all starts with acquisition, and when we say acquisition, you buy off state contract, Sheriff's Association, so your price is your price, your relationship's your relationships. We don't mind continuing using those relationships, but where the big advantage comes in is, well, you know, we have those relationships in place, so we'll continue to source those vehicles for you, doing that homework for you. So we have a network of dealers in place that are on the state contract in honor of the Sheriff's Association, so we'll continue to handle that, especially in times like this when vehicles are hard to find, we're facing a pending order strike, what's happening. So we're going to be very proactive on that. So again, if you have relationships in place, relationships in the county, you want to continue to use those, absolutely. But we're just going to want to make sure we're providing you all the options and making it as easy as possible. So any questions on the acquisition piece? Keep in mind, we're not married to any manufacturer, so we do all makes, models, Ford, Chevy, GM, Nissan, so we'll just, like I said, go out there and want to find what the best total cost of ownership for you. Financing and credit, we, most of our customers take advantage of the open-ended equity lease. The one thing that I want to just point out on that, it's not a typical dealer net lease. There's absolutely no mileage restrictions or no minimum wear and tear charges. There's a perception, it's only called the lease because Enterprise, we are the title holder for the term. That allows us to manage the title, to do the renewals, manage recalls, and ultimately sell the vehicles on your behalf. So right now, most entities are probably using gov deals, and that's fine for a few vehicles here and there, but when you start selling a lot of vehicles and you start maximizing that resale, for example, if you're selling a vehicle that's worth now 20,000 versus a vehicle that's worth 1,000, we hand sell those vehicles to franchise dealers, wholesale buyers, other counties, security companies, and we maximize that for you. There's a straight $400 disposal fee that's on Sourcewell, and everything else goes above and beyond back to you, the county. And that goes for your existing vehicles that you have as well. We satisfy the three bit process on that, so it allows us to sell those vehicles on your behalf. So it's another value add. So vehicles that you currently have and vehicles that you continue to ultimately lease, we can sell those vehicles on your behalf, maximize. Because again, Enterprise Rental makes their money by 1.5 million vehicles a year. They hold them for a year and sell them. So anything we can do to maximize that allows our customers to piggyback off that. Any questions on that? And our job, again, when we sell those vehicles is finding that optimal time, because again, if you're buying a vehicle and holding it until the wheels full up, it's worth 500, 1,000, it really doesn't matter. But we're saying, okay, this vehicle was worth 30,000, 40, oh, let's say you bought a vehicle for 50,000, and now the philosophy is different. You're selling it when it's worth 20,000. That's when that really starts to add up and you're maximizing that. Because you, as a government entity, buy vehicles just as well as, or if not better than Enterprise, so you really need to capitalize on that equity and that resale piece.
I got a question.
Sure.
So in a typical deal with a sheriff's department, how much equity usually do you have in a vehicle? Do you have a certain mileage? Or what do you look for when you're going to get rid of it?
Sure, great question. So now with sheriff's vehicles versus, let's say, public works vehicles, we understand there's more outfit involved, there's more aftermarket. So we take that all in consideration. So on average, we'll see maybe a three to four year hold on that. But what we're doing is we're monitoring the market value, we're monitoring what it's costing to operate that vehicle, maintenance, and we're identifying, okay, when is the maximum time to sell this vehicle when we can maximize that resale? In essence, when it's starting to cost you more to operate that vehicle than it would to replace that. So we'll have the analytics and data to provide that. So maybe right now, we'll say, okay, we're selling that vehicle, you might take out any equipment, any of the technology, but anything that's screwed or, you know, nailed or not, you know, we'll say leave with the vehicle because we're going to sell that to another county, to a security company. So we'll say, okay, now we're selling that vehicle for 10 or 12,000 dollars versus, you know, when you were doing basically nothing. So again, that's going to vary based on the vehicle, the aftermarket, the mileage. But typically, we'll want to sell those vehicles around when it approaches that 100,000 mile mark at the most. So if you're doing on average maybe 30,000 to 33,000 miles a year, that vehicle now would probably be about a three-year hold. And so what we would do is when we set up that lease, instead of doing a straight finance, say all-in with equipment, that vehicle's 50,000, instead of stroking a check or doing a straight finance to zero, the way we do it is you finance it down to an unpaid principal with our equity lease, open-ended. You have the ability to turn that vehicle in at any time throughout the term. But if you only finance that vehicle down to, let's say, 15,000, your monthly payments now are smaller because you're not financing a portion of the vehicle you're not using. And then our goal is to sell that vehicle for you in year three while you're still in an equity position. You've never paid for that bottom portion of the vehicle, you kept your payment smaller, and now you're selling it while there's equity in the vehicle. And now you're also getting out of the vehicle before you're putting in that maintenance, those catastrophic failures, and then you're just starting to cycle those vehicles at a healthy rate.
So would it be fair to say that if you purchase a vehicle, 55,000, 60,000, you may get a return of about 12,000 or 15,000 out of it in three years?
Yeah, I would say that that's very, very conservative and fair. So we would probably write that vehicle down. If we did a three-year, you know, you'd probably see it go somewhere to around, you know, 10, 12,000 with a resale, probably close to 15,000 to 17,000 on average. And we have some municipalities as well as counties that have gone through full cycles that have recognized and seen that. Right now, I mean, the resale market is even stronger. I mean, we understand the challenges. You could sell them and maximize it, but you've got to find vehicles too. So what we're doing is, you know, we have those conversations with the manufacturers way in advance. We're letting you know, okay, these manufacturers are facing cutoffs. Ford Police Interceptors only producing 7,000 annually, so for example, you need to have a backup plan. And it might be, okay, we've recommended the Dodge Charger, the Dodge Durango, say, okay, well, we don't typically like Dodge, but if you're going to sell it at three, two, three, four years, most of those vehicles up until a certain mileage are going to operate pretty neutral. It's when you start holding those vehicles longer. But we'll have the data and the conversations to support.
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, do these lease prices take into consideration the outfit of a sheriff's car? Is the numbers I'm looking at now going to go up because of the upfitting or?
Typically, we do keep the outfit separate. That comes out of, we have the ability to cap that into the lease, or at least a portion of it, but a lot of times, there's a separate budget for that, and it allows the entity to have more equity to turn those vehicles more often. So if that outfit is paid upfront, everything else in the equity in that vehicle goes directly back to you, so it gives you more flexibility. Because as you know, the outfit piece doesn't hold its value as much as the vehicle. So typically, that's what we do see. But there are some instances where we can include that, and we would just, based on the cost of that, we would just say, okay, maybe half of that would be put down. Because we want to make sure, you know, you're in an equity position, so when we're running the analysis throughout the term, you have the flexibility to turn those vehicles in. And a lot of times, we see the outfit is what would hold you back. But usually, it's a separate budget for that. And with that being said, a lot, some of that equipment stays with you, you know, as the vehicles are transferred. Some stuff we do recommend keeping in when we sell it, but some of the stuff, the technology, the computers and stuff, you know, would go on to the next generation vehicle if you turn them more often.
You had a question, though?
Yeah, the leasing proposal that they gave us, we included, these numbers include the outfit of 12,000 dollars for each vehicle that are there. They ran it both ways, as a straight vehicle where you pay for the outfit, and then as a vehicle with the outfit.
Yes, it was on that, and we could, yeah, we could jump ahead here. Sorry. That's okay.
Not to jump ahead, but just clarify.
Okay. Yeah, when we did the analysis, we ran that, okay, and then with the outfit. But yeah, to stay on track here, you had asked a question about when to replace a vehicle. So as you see right there, there's no numbers on the bottom or on the side, but we'll run that analysis. And our goal is to say, it makes sense to replace the vehicle now, because after this point, you're going to see the depreciation start to level off, your maintenance numbers and your fuel numbers are going to go up. Whether you're doing onsite maintenance, offsite maintenance, it doesn't matter, there's going to be, that maintenance number will go up, and the fuel cost will go up just based on degradation. So you'll start to see, it will actually cost you more to operate the vehicle to the right side than it does with getting a new vehicle. So that's our goal, to run those types of analysis for you on each and every vehicle.
What's the basic mileage for changing vehicles?
We usually, it varies based on the vehicle and application. Typically, we do see them in the police vehicles around the 100,000 mile mark at the most. Sometimes on like, for example, a public works vehicle based on, with very minimal aftermarket, it might make sense to replace that vehicle in year two or three, even if the mileage is only around 50,000, because there's so much equity in the vehicle, where if you sell that vehicle while you're capturing that, you could then take that equity and apply to the next round of vehicles, reducing that payment. That's where you'll see a significant decrease in generation two by using that equity of selling the vehicle. So again, it's, because there's no actual, you know, it's based on, you know, some vehicles, you might spend more time being idle, so the mileage will be less. So we'll, you know, we'll take into account all those factors when we're running the analysis for you, what would make the most sense.
Sure. What is the average mileage you put on a vehicle in a year?
Yeah, you know, average, if you're talking about a patrol vehicle, you'd be talking around 30, 35,000. If you're talking about an administrative or plain closed officer, you're looking a lot less when you're talking 10,000 to 12,000 to 14,000. It depends on what average job. The patrol officer would say 30,000 to 35,000.
So with those higher mileage ones, we'd probably see three years the most. And then the other ones, I mean, mileage will be low, but that doesn't mean we say, we still wouldn't recommend holding that for six years. We'd still say maybe, you know, on average, around three, four years because of, again, the resale, the value, and what we can do for that on the secondary market with a vehicle, you know.
And what's the difference, what's the difference in no mileage and 60,000 miles?
So the difference between low mileage?
No mileage and 60,000 miles. What does the vehicle cost when it's purchased? And how much is it worth 60,000 miles later?
Yeah, so let's say, for, I mean, it's hard to gauge, but if, I mean, it depends how long it takes you to get to 60,000. If someone's doing 15,000 a year, so that would be four-year hold, so maybe a $50,000 vehicle in four years of that, I mean, would still be close to, I'd say, 20, 22,000. But a vehicle that might have gone 60,000 in two years, you know, might not have that because, you know, of what it, so it's really hard to gauge that. It's really based on how long it takes you to get there and what the market condition is. But, and again, our remarketing team is, and also depends on the vehicle type and the make, model, and some, a lot of other factors, but we'll have the data to support that because of our remarketing team who's selling a million vehicles. As you're looking to sell vehicles, we'll gauge that and say, okay, this is what the market's dictating for this vehicle. But it really depends on, you know, how long it takes you to get there.
I have another question.
Yeah.
You said you work with other sheriff's departments, that kind of thing. Is it generally that they get Durangos? It looks like most of these things are SUVs. Is that what all sheriff's departments are going to, SUVs?
We're seeing a lot go to pickup trucks. The police interceptor is obviously very hard to get right now, and so we've seen a lot go to pickup trucks. The Durango right now is a little more easily accessible, so we've seen them pivot to that too. But again, they're on our maintenance plan, and they're turning the vehicles at the right time. So with that, they're more confident maybe making a manufacturer change or something that they hadn't done in the past. But again, it's, in a normal world, we would go out and get you exactly what, you know, we want. We'd show you some different options, and then we would go ahead and factory order that, and it would take three to four months, and now it's, it's what we can find. But we want to make sure we're providing you all the options.
And if I could note, Mr. Chairman, to your question, I understand that the Dodge sedan is going to be phased out next year. That's been the primary pursuit vehicle that's being phased out.
So you would pursue any Durango or Tahoe?
They're not really making sedans pursuit vehicles anymore, are they?
No, they're not making those anymore. And mostly what everybody is going through now, like you said, the Dodge Durangos, because it's just more quicker to get. The Ford Explorers, Interceptors are very hard. I mean, you can barely get them, or if you have to get them, you have to wait for a whole nother year. And then when he was talking about the pickup trucks, I mean, most people, a lot of agency sheriff officers are getting pickup trucks. Of course, we work the county, and that's why most, some of them are getting those. But mostly, fleets are mostly going to the Durangos. But I have a question, if you don't, on behalf of the board, if you don't mind, on him, if he could explain to the board as in, if we have a vehicle accident, how the Enterprise benefits if we have a vehicle accident and replacement.
Sure. And that's typically really handled, the same way you're handling it today. The insurance is still carried as you're handling it today as well. But the benefit is, once that is settled, then we'll assist with the process, where it allows us to then, you know, because you're, you've paid your government, but the vehicle value is probably going to be worth at times more than you've paid for it, depending on how far along in the cycle it is. And once that's settled, we can use those funds to ultimately sometimes get you numerous vehicles. So where that vehicle needs to be replaced, and then, you know, and once it's settled, and let's say it's a vehicle that costs 50,000, now you're getting a check back for 30, but putting it on an open-ended lease, we could, you know, you don't need the funds now. You don't need to go out and buy a brand-new vehicle because they're on the equity lease, so we can turn something around pretty quick. But as far as for all intents and purposes, insurance-wise, I mean, we continue doing what you're doing today, but it allows us to kind of step in and help facilitate a little bit easier as well.
Moving on.
Sure. And then, this is a snapshot of your, as you see, your fleet today, and just some things that, you know, stood out is, you know, there's just, as you're aware, a number of vehicles that are just in that space of, you know, approaching those 10 years and older. So what we would do is kind of identify some of those vehicles that, you know, some of those we would say just continue to operate for the time being, you know, they're paid off and so forth. But then there's a sweet spot of vehicles that are around five or six years that have some good equity in the vehicle, and those are the ones we'd recommend. some good equity in the vehicle, and those are the ones we'd recommend replacing. And it allows us, for example, a vehicle, a 2018 vehicle, might have an estimated value on average of 13,000. We just ran this for another municipality. So if you took, you know, all those vehicles that were 2018, '17, and said, okay, those are the ones we'll start with, and they have a rough value of 13,000 each, now you have, you know, $300,000 of equity right there, where you could take those and str-- apply that. Otherwise, you're just gonna lose out on that equity piece. So in addition to what you've been approved, or what your budget number is, because our goal's always to be add or less than that, we then have the ability to tap into your current fleet and utilize that equity to access vehicles as well. So that's kind of something that jumps out in this. I mean, like you mentioned, outside the sheriff's vehicles, you don't do a lot of mileage, which is great for resale, which is even more reason. So the thought process might have been, well, let's hold these vehicles longer, because they don't do a lot of miles. It's actually the other way around. You should sell them sooner, when you can maximize and capitalize on that equity piece, because you do such low mileage on those, which is similar for a government entity. And as I'm sure, as you're aware, on the maintenance piece, most of the high offenders will be on those higher mileage vehicles. So as you start to phase out of those, you'll start to really see, most of your vehicles are just gonna be operating under routine maintenance. This is a model that we shared, and there were some assumptions in here, but ultimately, what we were showing the town, and this was based on the data that was provided, is that if we put together a 10-year model, you know, theoretically, you know, capitalizing as you transitioned over to-- and we understand, you know, we don't expect the county to move to a fully leased fleet anytime soon, but as you start to go from a purchase model to a lease model, what would happen is, as you start to replace vehicles, you get to that point where basically you'd have a fixed cost, because your maintenance would generally be, number one, we have the ability to fix the maintenance on these vehicles, or you'd have a good basis on what your maintenance spend is, because you're getting rid of the vehicles at the same point. Your fuel would be, you know, your fuel cost, based on your mileage, so that would only be a variable, as fuel goes up and down. So we're showing that, as you see a shift in costs, and maintenance and fuel start to go down, your lease payments will go up, but ultimately, you'd be at a fixed lease, and you'd be rolling that equity. So for example, as you see, year one, if you were to do, you know, if you leased 73 vehicles, now you'd take on payments for 73 vehicles, but with that, you would have replaced 73 vehicles. So if you look down below, that first year, we're saying, the average of the 73 vehicles that we would sell here are worth around 6,000 each, which is how we get that $408,000 of equity that would be applied to the first year. So we're applying back 409,000, which means your maintenance numbers are gonna go down. So you're, and you would actually be, the first year, you'd be roughly $332,000 below what your current budget is, if you were to start to, you know, go into a leased fleet. And that would vary, as you see, year to year, based on how many vehicles are coming off term, how many we're recommending. Some vehicles would be held longer, some would be held shorter. So there's a lot of stuff that goes behind the scene of this model, but ultimately, what we're saying is, there'd be an average sustainable savings and a 10-year savings of roughly 981,000. If you were to start to replace vehicles, most of that would be capturing that equity and rolling it at the right time, and then seeing your maintenance and fuel budget go down. Whether you're doing onsite maintenance or using local shops, that maintenance number would still go down.
Is there a difference in the cost of a police vehicle as a regular leased vehicle?
As far as, in what way?
Equipment. Is there a difference in the way the vehicle is equipped?
So the, I mean, the police vehicles will be upfit, they're typically, the aftermarket on those vehicles will be more than a standard, like, pickup truck or something. And there's, whether it's the racks, the cages, the technology, we see an average of maybe 12,000 to 15,000 dollars of outfit on those. But as far as the mechanics of the vehicle, I mean, the maintenance piece, that part will still be maintained, and then, you know, we'll be selling those. So, and this analysis takes that into consideration. Those are, those would probably be ones that would be held longer versus the non-police vehicles.
What is the closest unit of government that you lease to in this area?
So right here, well, we work with Lenore County, we work with City of Rocky Mount. Town, the town just became a partner, so, you know.
Tarver did?
Yeah. Tarver met with Troy today and the team, so they have, they've committed to five ERV vehicles so far. So they're very early on, probably about a month or two in. So they went through the due diligence process and everything.
You said they leased five?
So far, yeah. Yeah. We have a commitment to five.
They're now leasing law enforcement vehicles?
It's just, right now, police vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think one passenger van, and we're gonna be doing their maintenance as well. Town of Nashville. So just, you know, as far as county-wide, Onslow County, and we've done on the western part of the state, too. So we'll be happy to put together a list of references as well. But someone, like, similar to your fleet size, I know they're a city, but City of Rocky Mount came on board back in December, and they've, so far, have seen a lot of benefits to the partnership.
How many are they leasing?
Close to 200 right now.
They're leasing a couple.
Yeah. And they have their, they put their current garage on our maintenance facility as well. So allows that, when I say maintenance facility, it allows us to put it on our program, so we can start capturing the maintenance. They still utilize everything the same, but it integrates with our system, so they have visibility to that. So when we look to start a partnership, we look to identify, you know, X amount of vehicles, and then it allows us to go out and capture those vehicles, and start to put them on, and then, you know, over time, that partnership evolves, and then you really start to see that benefit as you're selling and replacing vehicles. As I mentioned on the backend, the disposal piece, we're not, you know, GovDeals, typically auction, sell the vehicle. We go and deal direct almost 90% of the time, so we're hand-selling those vehicles. So you, like I said, if you are gonna replace 20 vehicles or 30 vehicles, you're not gonna call GovDeals and deal with that, and we're just gonna take that off your plate completely and hand-sell those vehicles and maximize that for you. Any questions on the resale piece? And then, we, on the maintenance portion, for non-police vehicles, we have the ability to fix those maintenance costs per month. So with your lease payment, we could also set a rate that would cover everything on the vehicle for the terms. So for example, just using a standard pickup truck, we might say $90 a month covers everything on the vehicle. Now, these, for that program, they would need to go to offsite locations. It could be local shops, dealerships, and so forth, but that is fixed. You're out of it completely, it's fixed, it's budgetable, and we say, okay, for the term, you're paying X amount a month, and that, everything's on that vehicle, is covered. That includes oil changes, routine maintenance, cash traffic failures, filters, and so forth. And then for the police vehicles, those will be put, because of the intricacies and the, with ERV vehicles, we're able to put those on the maintenance management, where we cover it, we capture it. If they go offsite, we pay the vendor, but we're not able to fix that monthly. So those are our two maintenance options. But the biggest piece that we want is, we want to make sure we're capturing that information, so we know what your maintenance spend is, so we can make recommendations. Because again, so much of that will be, when is it costing you more to keep operating? And does it make sense to put this repair in the vehicle? Does it make sense to put $5,000 on this vehicle, and it's only worth 2,000? And have those conversations with the town, with the county. As far as fuel, and we've talked about, we partner with Ride Express, so, and I know most, a lot of government entities do, and if you can, you know, participate in YX or Ride Express, then that's, that information integrates with our system, so we could capture the fuel. But again, the more information we have, the more data and recommendations we can The one thing, do you guys, or have you evaluated any type of telematics or GPS tracking?
We use on some of our things in sheriff's office and utilities.
Because, yeah, and I know Geotab offers some very aggressive options for government entities, too. I think the unit itself might, I don't know, it varies a lot, but sometimes, you know, they're offering a free unit, and then the monthly bill is minimal, too. That information integrates, again, with our system. But as, okay, yeah, perfect.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Not for you, probably for them. Do we not? How much money do we spend a year on fuel?
Sir?
How much money do we spend a year on fuel? Y'all keep--
I can't give you a good number, because as much as fuel's changing.
Go ahead.
I think--
They don't expect right here?
I know about the maintenance costs and I do fuel.
Well, I didn't think anybody'd pull it out in the air, but I was curious.
It's the second chart.
The second chart?
Yeah, in the sheriff's office for FY '23, my eyes were serving well.
351.
351, that's right.
Yep. I need to look at it, Jim.
Go ahead.
And then, what happens is, as a partner, you're assigned, basically, a client strategy manager, an account manager, who works with the team proactively, who will set up time with each of the individual departments, to plan ahead, to run the analysis, to make recommendations. So as you're preparing for your budget, we're showing you all options, what's available, what other entities are doing, to put you in a position to make the best decisions. Obviously, ultimately, it's gonna be your decision, but we're gonna give you the data to support that. So if we know, you know, police interceptors are only producing 7,000, you know, for the whole country, you might wanna look at something different, because the chances that you're gonna be able to secure one are pretty low. We do have vendors that let us know when they come available from other entities that aren't able to take delivery, and they give us the first right of refusal, so we'll have options like that. But ultimately, we want to be able to have those conversations and be proactive. And then all that information will put together, you'll have access on our website. So when you go and turn to the website, each vehicle gets assigned its own unit number, and based on that, you'll see what your maintenance spend is, what the vehicle's worth. If it's leased or not, you're remaining, you know, the balance, so you could have that information at your fingertips at any time. I could tell you, like, I know City of Rocky Mount was looking to evaluate software for their fleet management, and that was part of the reason they ended up partnering with us, because it's, basically, it's included. As a partner, you could put all of your vehicles on that, even the non-enterprise vehicles, for $6 a month per vehicle. So in essence, we're, it's $72 a year per vehicle to capture that data, for us to make those recommendations, and have all that visibility. So that was a big key, versus going ahead and investing in a lot, in a very expensive software program. And ours is very robust, and it's continuously evolving, so we're happy to set up a demo of our website at any time, if anyone would like to see that. Any driver that has a smartphone, they'll have access to our website. With that, it just allows them to utilize the maintenance card, maintenance locators, mileage, alerts, reminders, and tracking and so forth as well. But typically, like I said, the next step, if, you know, if there was interest, we'd be happy to put together some, you know, vehicle-specific pricing, based on what's available, and what our options are. Something we, you know, we share before we call, like a menu pricing option, where we know what your existing budget is, and we say within that budget, your monthly spend for this vehicle and your annual spend. So for example, a vehicle that's 40,000 might have a monthly spend of 800, or it costs you, let's say, $9,600 a year to operate that vehicle. So instead of going out, spending 40,000, you're budgeting 9,600 a year for that vehicle. Now, instead of buying one vehicle, you could buy four vehicles, or at least four vehicles, for the same cost that would've cost you to lease one vehicle. So if we know your budget, we can then back into how many vehicles we can get you annually based on that. Then we also know the vehicles aren't gonna deliver the first day of the fiscal, so we're already four, five, six months in, so now your monthly, your annual payments for that vehicle will even be less. So now there's some surplus, too. So if you annualized $10,000 for that one vehicle, but it delivers halfway through the year, you have an extra 5,000 for that vehicle for the year, which could be put towards the cost of the vehicle, it could be put towards outfit. It gives you flexibility to bring down that payment as well.
Any more questions?
We always say, I mean, I know it's, it's a change of culture, so, I mean, we're very used to this, where it's just kind of getting an understanding, but we always, if you think of it this way, it's, okay, here I am now, taking vehicle, and instead of financing that vehicle down to zero, let's say, I'm gonna finance it down to, you know, 20,000. So I'm only financing now for 50. Instead of financing 50, I'm only gonna finance 30. My monthly payment's gonna be smaller. And then you never have to finance that back end, because you're selling it before you get there. And then you're able to get more vehicles, capture that equity piece, and we manage that whole process, you know, for you. You're never paying anything more, because you always have the ability to continue to pay the vehicle off, take title. So it's your equity, it's your vehicles. It's just, if we're gonna sell them at the right time, why finance, or why pay cash for the whole thing?
How many, how many new vehicles would they start off with, and we reach this lease?
I think we were looking at roughly, was it 28? I think, I think it was 20 sheriff vehicles and eight non-sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So small, you know, we, there's no, again, we're not looking, it's what you're able to do, we work within that budget. There's no number, this, this or that. I mean, we understand there's a, the more that vehicles you have, the more value we can show you, but we have to earn that business. So I think, I think we're up at 28, based on the budget.
There's no more questions, I think. What we have here, you see a proposal from Commissioner Thorne. Why don't we go ahead into, you stay with us, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead, Commissioner?
So I'd spoken with Ms. Huff and confirmed numbers, based on the menu pricing that you guys had discussed and presented previously. And in discussions with the sheriff's department and the sheriff, we were looking at ways to specifically structure the sheriff's department, and then look at the other departments, kind of as tertiary. So say, okay, how many vehicles can we get with the sheriff's department and get creative, knowing that we need eight vehicles in the other departments, and then finding the budget to do those eight other vehicles. And in doing that, we started looking specifically at the detention center, and historic vacancies there, and how we've bought vehicles over the last three years, has been through budget amendments and using vacant, lapped salaries. And so we take the lapped salary at the end of the year, when all the vehicles have been allotted for and bought, and say, okay, here you go, you take all that money and go buy vehicles now, and through budget amendments. So what I've asked the sheriff is, how many positions do you actually think you need in your detention center, so that we can properly budget that money upfront, and then lease vehicles on a three-year term for you? And then back into the number that way. So then you're not, we're not necessarily having to come up with more money, budget more money as a board, we're using the budget that's there, that's already being appropriated in this way, and just moving it at the beginning of the year in our budget process, to allow them to get vehicles on a three-year replacement cycle. If that's successful, you could grow that program, or however that needs to be, or whatever that needs to be. The way I was be able, the way I back ended into the number is, and there's multiple steps there, but you cut the positions from 20 vacant positions currently to 10 vacant-- there, but you cut the positions from twenty vacant positions currently to ten vacant positions, you increase the base pay to forty thousand dollars, so that's four hundred thousand dollars of salary. Right now, we're budgeting seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars of salary, so then you have a surplus of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to put towards leased vehicles. We, in our capital outlay, we split with interest payments on the vehicles that we have that are financed, and then, we give him a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in capital expenses to go buy vehicles, which is usually about two vehicles by the time you factor in all the costs. So, we're budgeting each year for them to buy two vehicles to replace a fleet of, they've told us needs to be about eighty vehicles, so the math just doesn't work there. So, then, you take the capital expenditures plus the excess funds, you get five hundred and five thousand dollars to go buy vehicles. If I take your numbers with outfit, because I don't think that we can feasibly bite off the outfit in our budget, so if I take your numbers with outfit, I can get to twenty-five vehicles at an annual budget of four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, one hundred, four hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and forty thousand dollars annually, which would be five Tahos, fifteen Durangos, and five Chargers, based on the estimates provided in August. A lot going on there, but there's multiple factors to that, and costs that aren't associated with this, such as, you're losing retirement, you're losing insurance for those ten positions that would be cut, so there's savings there, you'd be able to sell twenty-five-plus vehicles, because you'd have reliable vehicles. I've been told repeatedly that they have a hundred vehicles in their fleet, or however many vehicles in their fleet, just because they had eight Chargers break down in one week. And so, how do you replace eight vehicles, or have eight vehicles in the shop, without having ten vehicles on the, on the back end to replace those vehicles, and have people to be able to actually do their job? So, that's, that's kind of my logic, is just being able to give them twenty-five vehicles steady, that you know are going to be brand-new every three years, and then, you can look at it from there. And if we need to look at continuing financing vehicles above that, we can continue our practice on financing vehicles as that need arises, but it at least replaces the most critical need for the sheriff's department, as it currently sits. The makeup of vehicles can change, any of those numbers can change, but the key number is that we have five hundred and five thousand dollars of already budgeted money that we can give the sheriff's department to spend on leasing vehicles.
And, I guess, my main, one of my main concerns are, do we need to do vehicles? We do. Well, first, I think I want to hear from the manager in terms of his responses to how we might, okay, let me hear, let's hear from the manager, okay?
Sure, well, first thing I want to say, I know I've said this to the board before, for the record tonight, I want to say it again, for those in the room, those who may be watching, I absolutely agree that we, as a county, need to do something to help address the sheriff's fleet needs, without a doubt. I do think, in the midst of a lot of good information that you've received tonight, including your proposal from Commissioner Thorne, I think there are a couple of other things that you just need to make sure that you consider as you make an informed decision. The first of which being that, as, I think you discussed some at your last meeting, as of now, the sheriff does not have federal inmates, so there's going to be some financial impact, because that was a revenue that was budgeted, expected, that, at this point, we won't be receiving, at least to the degree we budgeted, so we need to factor that in as well. The other thing you need to factor in is that, you'll recall, with this current year's budget, we did it last year as well, we used a vacancy allowance approach to our budget, where we, we went in, looked at our four largest departments, we anticipated, estimated what vacancy would be in that department, and then, we essentially tied up that lapped salary that we would expect to have, and we did that so that we could appropriate less from fund balance to balance our budget. So, already, we have, we have vacancy allowance budgeted in both detention budget as well as sheriff's budget, DSS, health department as well, EMS as well. So, those are just important things for you to think about as, as you make an informed decision. Happy to answer any, any questions, Jeremiah.
I think, go ahead, go ahead.
One question. What was that amount for those inmates that we were?
Well, we budgeted.
Ballpark.
We, we budgeted one point three million this year.
Okay.
In FY20, this past fiscal year, the total received was a little over one point five million dollars.
Okay.
So, it, to the sheriff's credit, that has increased over the last couple of years, as you know, he renegotiated the rate for the inmate housing, and we saw that realized in the last couple of years, as that revenue has grown.
Well, I believe with, with the loss of the revenue from the, from the loss of the federal inmates, I think, and based on what Mr. Thorne has said, we've got revenue loss, but based on what he's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of, he does not see the loss, you don't just see the loss to those figures, do you? Or to the figures that, you don't believe that we're going to have, I think we've got to make up to one point two. One point five million, somewhere in our budget.
Well, one point two is what we're doing.
One point two, I think we, I think with the loss of that, how do you see us, how do you see us doing your proposal with that loss of revenue? How do you see?
Well, you still have ten vacant positions that are there, so, I mean, if.
We've got twenty, we've got twenty.
We've got twenty now, yeah, so, I mean, there's still money that's there that can be reallocated. I'm, I'm not going to speak for the sheriff, but I know that the prisoners are still, still on the table of being able to come back, it's not a matter of they can't come back, so I think it's, it's a matter of saying, hey, we, we need the prisoners to come back. Part of the concern that, that I've heard from multiple people in the department is that, when you have twenty vacancies, you can't ensure the safety of the staff that's working in the detention center. So, they're not adequately staffed, so part of this was saying, heck, can we raise their pay to try and entice them to get more staffed, to, to raise that and allow them to staff appropriately? And with that, then, the prisoners could feasibly come back.
So, would they not need all twenty positions if they were to come back?
If they came back?
If they came back and filled all twenty positions, then we would be making more revenue than the one point two million dollars.
Did you study the, the track record for the last two or three years with vacant positions at the end of the year, was it the same amount?
I think it's, I think it's been fifteen plus, from my understanding, in the detention center, every year.
Every year, it's the same fifteen or so vacancies.
And inmate population fluctuates also.
The second thing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The second thing is, have you had a discussion with the sheriff on what, doing away with the federal prisoners, how it will cut money? I mean, if we're not having federal prisoners, it's not going to take the same amount of staff to, to man the jail, or detention center, or whatever, have y'all even discussed that?
We've not discussed where specific cuts should be made.
We don't know at this point how, or if it will cut the cost, because federal prisoners are gone.
Now, I will say, so naturally, there'll be some, some reductions in costs and things like medical, dental care, uni, well, I don't know, uniforms, possibly food and supplies, so that will just naturally happen, those costs will go down. Outside of that, the biggest cost is personnel costs.
That's what I'm wondering, is there a way for us to get a handle on what might happen without forty, how many, do y'all know how many federal prisoners we had last amount, forty or fifty?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
So, I guess my question is, if we don't have forty-five people, is there really any sure way of knowing that at least this amount will be cut out of that one point five million income that we don't have?
Well, the only way that we would know that is to determine how many positions that he would not need, and that he could cut, as the result of having forty to forty-five less inmates.
Well, I'm kind of assuming that he thought about that, knowing that he wasn't going to have forty to forty-five federal inmates, I don't know, I'm just, I can't speak before a meeting, I'm not trying to, I'm just curious. The other thing is, do we have any other financial obligations like this? We were, we were budgeting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay debt on some cars we were buying, each year, right?
Well, we were budgeting as a block, two hundred and fifty thousand for vehicles, approximately half of that is going to current debt service.
One twenty-five, and how much more debt service?
About one twenty-five, and then, the balance is in the budget now to purchase vehicles outright, and I think that was the one twenty-five that Commissioner Thorne referenced in this.
One twenty-five is one twenty-five.
How many vehicles can you purchase with one twenty-five thousand?
Not many, when you're talking about, when you're purchasing an SUV from forty to forty-five thousand, plus another twelve to fifteen thousand outfit costs, it's expensive.
I would like to see, let's see if it's probably, with the loss of the one point two, the one point five million.
One point five.
What would be staff figures, as it relates to maybe what Mr. Thorne has proposed? I want to see staff figures in terms of, where, if we did his proposal, where they would put us, okay?
Okay.
You follow, you follow my statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, where that would put, is there a possibility of, of us staying within budget? And during Mr. Thorne's proposal? If so, what additional amendment would we have to do to, to, if we would have to amend our budget from fund balance, to do this, what would that cost us?
Correct, and there's still some amendment in there, because there's other vehicles outside the sheriff's department, so that analysis needs to happen.
Okay, you're talking about the other five that you proposed?
Current, yeah.
Okay, it was twenty-eight at one time, this has been cut, I think that initial, what I can see, I see what you're saying is.
Yeah, because there's, the enterprises told us that they would not lease just to the sheriff's department, so they would have to commit some funds from another budget to, to budget for this.
And I heard that, because they said that they were leasing to Tarver strictly law enforcement, so I didn't ask the question.
Sorry, we got, we do have a commitment of one, we do have a commitment of one non-police, so percent-wise, it was most of, sorry.
There was a difference, okay, so, and, okay, in terms of what you would do for us, but you stated you were doing to, to others, not that it matters if we can do it, okay?
Sure.
If we can do it, that doesn't matter, okay? You understand my question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if we can get those figures, and have them, next meeting? Have them for the next meeting, we'd have something to compare, and what possibility of what the board can or cannot do. Finance for the county, can or cannot do. Any other comments or questions, and we'll hear from that at our regular scheduling meeting?
Yes, sir.
Does that, does that meet the board approval?
Yes.
Are there any other questions as related?
Thank you.
So, from our side, you want to see an updated?
Any questions from the deputies?
No, sir, not at this time, thank you.
Go right ahead.
Yes, so, we understand, what, do you need to see from us an updated model, or?
Well, why don't you, why don't you give us?
Can I make a recommendation?
Go right ahead, go ahead.
I think we need, I think we need to give you a budget, and say, give us as many vehicles as you can give us. I think we need to look at our budget, analyze our budget, and say, we want as many sheriff's vehicles as we can get, within this budget. And then empower them to go out and get as many vehicles as they can get.
Provide if we can do that.
Provide, correct, within our budget, so we come back and say, okay, we've got a budget of five hundred thousand dollars that we've been able to allocate, find us five hundred thousand dollars worth of vehicles.
And the way we would present that would be back in the menu model fashion, where you would have a list of all the vehicles that we can get, what each one's cost is, and you could then plug and play, how many of each would allow you to fit within that budget.
I think that would be in cooperation with sheriff departments, in terms of what they might want out of your list, okay?
I think you already have the conversation with sheriff and his team of sort of the mix of vehicles for their twenty.
Yes, I know, yeah.
We probably need to have some more conversation about what the other eight might be.
Sure.
For the rest of the county, so that you can get it.
That makes sense.
My proposal, just to go in clarification, is we're not sticking, let's not stick to the twenty or the eight, let's give them a budget.
Sure, there's no number of, I see there is.
Yeah, yeah, let's give them a budget and say, if it ends up being fifteen, it ends up being fifteen, if it ends up being twenty-five, it ends up being twenty-five.
And that would be based on the numbers, that depended upon where we are.
Correct.
Based on the loss of the inmates and where we are, and the differences, whether we can or cannot, okay?
Yes, sir.
You've got to come back, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, I was gonna suggest that, I think that, I think really, you got two issues right now, that's, that's being brought and sort of merged together in this discussion, that is, meeting the fleet needs that we're trying to accomplish, and then, staffing in sheriff's offices, detention center particularly, as it relates to federal inmates not being there, when they may or may not come back. This is a more straightforward thing to get to, to get to a number. I think the other side of that is, is more complicated, in that there are a lot of things that getting to that number will be dependent on, will the federal inmates come back, if so, when, what would the impact that make, still factoring in what we have budgeted for, the vacancy allowance that's in the budget, we cannot ignore that.
And I think based, based, and the numbers that you're bringing back to us, I'm thinking should show us that, because what is, what he's suggested, and I don't know if he figured in the budget allowance, okay, and your figures might, going to be entirely different.
Right.
Okay, and based on that difference, we can look at it, you know, I, I think, the board has the authority, you know, I don't, I don't even think we need to be looking at whether we're going to take those detention laws, I think the board, because we can't budget based on what might come back, okay? But we can freeze all of those positions, the board can freeze those positions rather than eliminate them, and that takes care of that, and you don't have to go back and create them if we need them, we just don't have to put no money in them, okay? We freeze the money in those budgets, so there are a lot of different ways, I think, that we can do that, because we don't, we don't need to eliminate a position, then have to go back and create it again, so we can, and you help me if I'm going astray here, okay? Okay, but I think we can handle that, so I'm thinking, if we're just looking at, can we afford it? Okay?
Right, I, I would suggest that we look at these as separate decisions to make. I, I think we know that to get, to get us, I've been using this phrase, to get us ahead of the eight ball for, for the sheriff's sake regarding his fleet, it's going to cost us money, we know that, whether we're going to lease them, if we lease them, you know, we get the benefits that come with that, but that's, that's an annual payment, whether you decide you want to buy them outright, and that's a decision to make. But then, I think separate, a little bit more complicated than that, is how we handle the budget for the sheriff's staffing, he, he's responsible for how he handles his staffing, we're responsible for the budget that we apply for him to handle his staffing, and how leasing, and how federal inmates and the impact of that is going to affect that, I think there are a lot, some unknowns there. There's also the issue of, you know, do you want to increase the pay, again, for the detention officers? You know, we, we're doing that now with the new salary scales you just approved, and maybe you might want to decide, yeah, we should do that, it's still, maybe you feel like that's still not competitive enough, and that may be the case. I, I would just suggest that those can, those can be decided independently, I think it would just make us, make it easier for us to sort of chew on those two or three issues we're talking about, so that you can make an informed decision based on some information that we know, some that we can estimate, speculate, and some, we're, we're just not sure, would be my recommendation.
Right now, where are we?
Right now, I, I have your marching orders to gather you some more information, and I'll provide for you at your altar.
Okay, and that information, I, I think, made to be more specific is, is, and I, I do agree with you in terms of, we should not love these issues, and I don't think, in, in my mind, I was not loving, as it relates to, because I, frankly, I think we've done, I frankly think we've done the pay raises that we're going, that we ought to do, and we've got pay raises that have not been received yet, right?
They, they go into effect. They, they go into effect Thursday.
Thursday, so, so, you know, we, we can modify what he has, if we can, we've still got to look at the dollars in terms of what we can do.
And I, I totally understand the, the thought process of trying to merge the, the two concerns together, because I understand you're trying, you want to try to make some budgetary room to do, I, I understand that. But I think just with the nature of what we know and don't know in each of those things, it's complicated enough, I would suggest you make those decisions.
We were going, we were going to have to, we were going to have to do some positions regardless, we got to do some positions regardless of what we're doing, okay? Because of the fact that we've lost the revenue. So we're going to have to do some of the positions anyway. So it's not-
The only reason why I'd push those two together was, it, it makes sense financially, right? We're not spending extra money, so, yeah, you're looking at that. But then also, that's just how he's operating in his budget currently anyways. He's looking at his lap salary at the end of the year and moving that money to buy vehicles. That's what he's doing now. So it's, we're not conflating two things together any more than what's already happening.
Right. Well, I, I agree, that's what we've done in the past, but I think, well, we had some discussion during our budget preparation time back in the spring, that because we're using this, using again, this fiscal year, the vacancy allowance approach to our budgeting, that we need to be much more firm, and not just, not just his department, but other departments on moving money out of those salary lines because of that, unless there's a valid reason. For example, you have recently approved some budget amendments, where you did approve moving money out of salary, say, in Health Department, I recall, is a budget amendment, but you moved it into a contractual services line because we had vacancies in the WIC program and we needed contract, increase our contract line.
Still for personnel.
Right. So still somewhat under the personnel umbrella.
Just, there's two questions to that, then. So if it's in salary, he can move, he can increase his pay, he can rebudget his salary and cut positions, correct? Because it's already that, budgeted for salary?
He has the authority to fill, fill a position or not. His constraint is he cannot go over any individual budget line amount that's budgeted, unless a budget amendment is approved.
So if we draw a line in the sand that we're not going to allow him to move vacant, at the end of the year, he has 20 vacancies, and we draw a line in the sand that he's not allowed to move that money to purchase vehicles anymore, where's, he's not just going to give up that money?
Well, every department that we have leave, they leave money on the table at the end of the year.
He has not been, though. He's been reality, he's been budgeting that money to buy cars, and that's how he's been able to buy cars.
And, and my, my suggestion tonight, as it was back when we worked on the budget, was that because we needed to minimize the amount of fund balance that we appropriated, that we needed to tighten down on that.
We still didn't tighten down. He's got 20 vacant positions, and I don't think our vacancy allowance is accounting for 20 vacant positions.
Our vacancy allowance in detention was a little over $600,000, is what we budgeted. That encompassed both what we anticipated for salary, lap salary, and health insurance.
I don't agree with that budgeting practice. I mean, carrying $600,000 of vacancy every year, and we're already reallocating that money, he's not seeing where that money's going.
Well, really, we've made room to do the increases that we've done. That's, that's where it's going.
Any other comments or questions?
I've got a couple of questions for this young man before we break up here. I noticed, obviously, our insurance is going to go way up because we're using newer vehicles, but we're going to gain some equity down the line to cut our costs.
Sure.
In the past, in your track record, from what you can tell me, are you really going to be able to save money on maintenance?
Just inherently by replacing vehicles more often? Absolutely. Because most of those maintenance costs are going to be on those older vehicles.
So the real savings will come in the equity of selling those vehicles when they're still worth something, where we haven't been doing it all.
Yes. Majority of it will be with that, and then the maintenance costs.
Can we really save 10% or 15% on fuel?
I mean, regardless of the fuel prices in relation to that, just by, some of those older vehicles that you have that are 15 years old, I mean, the MPG's on that, you're going to see 5% to 10% over that time period, even more increase. I mean, you could, if you're capturing that data right now, you can see what those fuel costs are on a newer vehicle versus an older vehicle. So we do see that information, again, just by how fuel-efficient vehicles are today versus something that was 15 years old. The three main components are the, the fuel, the maintenance, and then the depreciation or the equity.
So we get the information before the next meeting in a fair amount of time?
In your agenda.
It'll come in the agenda packages.
Yes.
When will that, when is that next meeting?
First Monday, October 2nd.
Sure.
So if you are available, if you don't mind, planning the same time.
When do you need the numbers to be able to update your menus?
I mean, I would say no later than a week prior. The sooner the better, but no later than a week prior. I think a week's time would be sufficient. So maybe the, maybe not the preceding Monday, but that Friday or something. Of course, we have a good week.
We'll reach out to you this week, so we can pin down your question.
Y'all reach out, reach out to each other?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
And we look forward to having the opportunity.
Thank you for your time. Any other questions or comments from any board? If not, being a special session, this is the only thing that we can do, will.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
No, move, second.
Question, all in paper, that'd be no matter what sign I-